Call the meeting to order at four thirty-one.
We'll see.
Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we, you don't have a roll call in there, you want to do a roll call?
Segorsky.
Here.
Kaplan.
Absent.
Vandywater.
Absent.
Saint Vincent.
Here.
Brockman.
Here. Do you have an extra pen? Sure you give it back, she'll get mad. Okay, do we have a, do we have approval of the agenda?
I move.
Everybody have a chance to look at the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, or any discussion, all those in favor signifies they're saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, do we have any public, no public here, so no public comment on the agenda. We'll move on to the agenda item, new business, district investments.
Alright, Adrian and I met with the bank a couple times.
Did you meet with both banks?
No, no. We're only dealing with Nicolay because of the SEDAR's program that they offer. Well, I did meet with Kiki a while back. Just, just stopping in there to get interest rates and sign the papers, so. Alright, so I met with, or Adrian and I met with two reps from Nicolay Bank, Mark and I'm blank, Justin, Jerry.
I have Mark and Jeremy both.
Jeremy, that's what it was, thank you. And, so what we discussed was finding a secure home for monies that are two hundred and fifty thousand and above. And also looking at what the banks offer below that amount. And on the bottom of that sheet there, we can just go down the sheet if you like. This is off of our balance sheet. And total in the First Bank, it's availables million thirty-three oh thirty-three oh twenty-seven and change.
And where did that one come from? Do we just, do we take the, is it this number, the one one oh eight, minus sixty-one?
I, minus Nicolay, yes. The zero 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 four. Nicolay. You can do the math there.
Yeah, because I got a different number.
Oh.
When I.
My calculator doesn't work well.
So I was trying to follow this today and then put it in lines.
Okay.
I work in lines, I'm so sorry, I'm a spreadsheet queen. But when I, not this one, but if I just do First Bank total. I'm getting this number right here. And not the one oh three three. Unless I added in something that I should not be adding in.
Well, all I did was take the eleven oh eight seven nineteen and subtract the seventy-five six ninety-one.
Why are we subtracting the seventy-five six ninety-one? That's not Nicolay, that is
Oh, shoot.
The Nicolay one is the sixty-one four seventy-two.
You better work in lines, I didn't. Okay.
So that's what I.
Your number is going to be correct.
Okay.
That's just, that's just my inability to follow a line.
No, no, that's.
Okay, so that's, that's the number.
So the First Bank total would be actually, the actual number would be one million forty-seven thousand two hundred and forty-seven forty-one.
That is correct.
And then the total. What is, what is the one million one hundred and eight thousand seven nineteen?
So that is, that was with Nicolay, that's our balance sheet total, because you want to make sure they matched up. So, the amount that we have at First Bank is actually this number right here, this is your First Bank total.
This one right here?
Yep, that's your First Bank total.
And this is our overall total, when you add in what we have at Nicolay?
Yep, that's, and that's what's on the balance sheet.
Okay. Now, is this item number right here, this one here matches this. Well, anyway. Getting the corrected math. Thanks for that, by the way. We're, we want to keep a, a solid balance at First Bank because we have payroll and some, whatever's coming out of that checking account. But I would, and I have to go down to the bottom here. Looking at these investment programs which are.
That's your LG, LGIP.
LGIP. So, what we're what we're following in the proposal is Public Act twenty, which is included in your pack, uh, packet that I gave you. Lays out the security that we as a government agency need to follow and what we've put together, the Committee on Finance, is the SEDAR's program at First, or I'm sorry, at Nicolay Bank. Putting in a total of two hundred thousand in a one-year SEDAR's. Two hundred thousand in a two-year SEDAR's. Two hundred thousand in a three-year SEDAR's. And then increasing the amount in Nicolay checking to one hundred thousand six hundred ballpark, daily balances change. And at First Bank, maintaining a one hundred fifty-eight thousand zero twenty-seven balance in their checking, or wherever it happens to be today. I personally think that one hundred thousand and a hundred fifty-eight thousand seems to be a pretty large number to have in the checking account. Which is why at the very bottom of this first page, I suggest reducing it by fifty thousand in each bank. And putting those into a savings account there. So that if we have to add a little bit of money into a check for pre-sale or, you know, something, we will have it at our disposal. So uh, there's also once we get beyond the SEDAR's, we have the two hundred and fifty thousand going into what's called an LGIP. And that's an EIN guaranteed numbered back by the full faith and confidence of the government. Just as the SEDAR's with our FDIC. So following guidelines, that's my recommendation. Okay, I just have a question, when you back up on these SEDAR's, why are they broke up into three-year classes? Because you're, you're, when I, when I'm guessing is you're, you're doing a total investment of six hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
You're doing two hundred thousand for a year, which will be renewable within the year, correct?
Correct.
And then two years, and then three years, what's the advantage of that and why?
Well, it's, right now, it's, it's an advantage in, in holding an interest rate.
So the, on that one, the four point oh eight interest is across the board?
In the SEDAR's.
No, that is the interest rate right there. We do not, the four point oh eight percent interest was on a nine-month. Once we stepped into a year, two, three, four, five year.
That's right.
It went to the three point seven five, guaranteed at fifty million.
Okay, so this is, I mean so then we're, we're looking at three point seven five now. On those, for, for the three years.
For, for all three products at two hundred thousand.
Right.
So the one year was, the one and the two and the three will all get three point seven five percent interest.
At maturity.
Correct, that is.
So then you'll have to reinvest two hundred thousand of it next year, or renew it.
Correct.
And then the following year, you're going to have to do, depending if you do, have anything out of year. I guess I'm not following it, why don't, why don't you do it all for a year, or all for two, or all for three?
You have more liquidity when you, because we're staggering it.
Okay.
If something does happen where, within a year, we need, we have the ability to jump in and to renew part of it.
Right, instead of, instead of pulling it all out of a giant CD.
Because we'll have two hundred, we'll have four hundred thousand of it tied in for a minimum of two years. And then we'll have two hundred thousand tied up for a minimum of
A one year.
Three years, and then two hundred for one year. And then depending on how you want it, what you want to reinvest on it.
That's correct.
But I don't, so I don't understand, like why, like I'm with you Nate, why don't you just have it all in one? So if you want it free, then why wouldn't you just put it all in a year and then just do it in a year? Because you're not getting an advantage by ten, eight, two years.
Yeah, we're not getting advantage on any percentage points for having money tied up for three years, are we?
No, but if you, if you go in and break that contract, that one-year contract, two-year contract, three-year contract, you pay penalties.
Well, that's what I'm saying, so if you have it, if you have it tied, why tie it up for three years?
If you're not getting.
If you're not getting anything out of it. Why not do it for, all for a year and then reevaluate it in a year?
But in, in nine months, if we had a a need for two hundred thousand dollars or something. We would have to then break open a six hundred thousand dollar CD, which would analyze
More than.
So you can't do three separate yearly ones, you have to do them in a year class? You can't do three, a two hundred thousand for a year, two hundred thousand for a year, and two hundred thousand for a year?
You can, I think that our thought on it was, was with the market and everything and, and the rates dropping.
Right.
Was securing a higher interest rate for a longer period of time. Now, we still have the two hundred and fifty thousand that is in the LGIP account. That account, it's kind of interesting because that account actually renews monthly. So if we need.
And that's the one that pays at a higher rate?
It pays at a higher rate, but it renews monthly, so that's more of our hands-on, if we need, if, if we need something catastrophic, we can also dip into that one as well. If we're getting the higher interest rate on it.
Uh, the, the only thing with the long-term is, is it depends on what the market trend is, because if the market goes up five percent, you're going to be stuck for three years at three point seven five. I mean, I mean if it drops, yeah, you're going to make out, if it goes below, but it's came down again, I, I don't know, that's just my that's my, that's what I would question of it.
Five point five, we're going to three point seven six, I know the interest rates went down, but.
They went way down from when.
Right.
Way down.
And we can't compare it to that because.
Right.
Well, as Kiki's, uh their bank balance, or their bank CD rate was three point eight five, I believe. It was a three four.
I think it was three point seven five.
Or seven five.
But then if you talk to the guy, doesn't he give us a little bit more?
Yeah.
As whatever.
But, but then again, how much are you going to save over there, or have over there? Because we have an FDIC limit. So if we've got two hundred thousand in a checking account, we can only put fifty thousand into a savings.
It just seems like the same thing at Nicolay, because we can't put it all into one.
It is through Nicolay, but they do, they have the SEDAR's program, it is spread out through different financial institutions. But it's housed, it's, it's through Nicolay. The problem with the First Bank is that it is, it's not the same type of financial coverage that we are obtaining at Nicolay. We, First Bank has pledged shares. That's how they're going to insure the money. So I do understand the reasoning for looking elsewhere to move the money. It makes more sense. It, it makes more sense to move it to get the extra protection on the money, if that's a concern of the board. As far as the, it is the same rate whether it's a one, two, three, five-year CD, it is a three point seven five percent.
Yeah, I guess the only, the only thing I'm hung up on is the, is the three different age classes of the SEDAR's.
That's, that's, that was just our way of preserving what we have today. None of us are, you know, crystal ball readers.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, you don't know. The market has dropped. You know, will it continue to drop? Possibility, if it increases, you just have, I, I don't, I, I guess I'm looking on the, on the three-year end of it. Well, I don't have a problem with the, the, the one and two, but I'm just looking at your stretching on three years on that, because a lot can happen in three years.
And you can do three and three, do a
Yeah.
Three hundred and three hundred?
Three hundred, three hundred.
We're not locked into anything. I mean, what, what are your
Discuss.
What, what's your opinion on it then?
I wouldn't, I would not lump it all into one. I would not.
No.
I mean, I, I would say that, that six hundred thousand that you have into one, that if you break the penalty on that is not. I think, maybe into maybe a three hundred, three hundred, or do
Because you're actually, you, you're, you're actually going to still have, because you're still going to have two hundred and fifty thousand.
Over here.
Over here.
But if you're, when I look at that and say, okay, if that's, that could drop in six months as well. And we don't know what that one is, at any time, we can take that and we could transition it into a different one in the SEDAR's program. You could do a, a you could do separate, to my knowledge, you can do separate CDs. Or within SEDAR's, you could do a, a one-year, you could do a one hundred, a two hundred, and then do a two-year out of three. Or, I'm sorry, a three hundred thousand out of two, so that you have three separate accounts there.
Okay, so then my next question would be, when we're looking at this, we're looking at, uh, where are the because you have, when you're talking the, what is it, eight hundred, the total, eight hundred and
Eight fifty was.
Eight fifty?
Kind of around.
So when you're talking the eight hundred and fifty thousand, you have lumped in there one, two, three, four, five DLAs, correct?
We don't call them anything, we just have accounts, yes.
Right, but they're, they're listed here as DLAs.
Correct.
So that's money, obviously, we're going to have a, a question on the big one for seventy-five thousand, six hundred and ninety-one coming up in the future, that
We don't know.
You might, well.
We don't know.
We don't, we don't know, but there's a possibility you might have to liquidate.
And we can do that. We can do that.
Okay, under, that would be
One of, one of, either the savings accounts, or a combination of savings and checking.
Yeah, you wouldn't have to necessarily break the, the investment.
Correct.
To pay that out.
It would, it would still, it would still fit.
We'd be covered on that.
Yeah. And again, we're not able to read the future, but we don't know how any of that's going to play out.
Where is the, where is the Escanaba River Cleanup Fund sitting, that's like eighty-four thousand, isn't it?
That's in there as well.
Sitting right there.
So that's also
Why is that account separate, why is that not, what is the, I don't want to call it an issue, but why?
I don't know why he Judge Parks put it very carefully worded as, as kind of finagled, um uh, bookkeeping on Ronnie's part.
For the Escanaba one?
Yeah.
I'm talking about all of his, all of his. Everything that he ever did was skipped.
I, I would assume that that should have been rolled over into our our, our general balance.
Which is what's going to happen now. Soon as we put this in there, all of these lines are gone.
I think that's your question.
It's all one account, yeah, it's all one account.
We need one account for that, whether we call it a general DLA or whatever, but yeah.
It's just a general fund, or general account.
Okay, now I'm following down the three here, or the, I, there's, there's five of them here. Where is the, where are we looking at the, I'm not seeing the Escanaba River one, oh, right here, right here, right here. Sixty-one thousand, okay, I stand corrected. Am I looking at that right?
No.
No. That's a seventy.
Okay. Oh yeah, okay, because I knew it was close to eight. Yeah, so these will all be rolled into, we would have three two hundred thousand dollar SEDAR's, and then we'd have a two hundred and fifty thousand, what did you call it?
LGIP.
LT, yeah.
But you could, you could have, you could have different years on the SEDAR's, you don't necessarily have to do a one-year, a two-year, and a three-year. You could do two one-years and one two-year.
I'm wondering, why don't, if the nine months makes more money, why don't you do that? Maybe I hear it right, but did you say nine months?
Because there's more, there's more interest, whereas you're not locked in, I mean, if, if the market goes to hell and everything goes down, and you're making two percent.
But it's only three months, so isn't it a whole percent up that you make?
Well, yeah, but if, if in nine months, if it, within the course of the renewal of that one goes, you're, you're going to drop. You're going to be guaranteed for one-year, two-year, and three-year at the three, at the three, I understand that, the three seventy-five. That's going to be a guaranteed rate, it's not going to go below that.
What's the nine-month guarantee rate?
The nine-month is whatever the market holds. If the market crashes, and the market goes down and drops under three percent, or three-two, or, or two-eight, then that's what you're going to get, you're, you're
That's the government interest rate.
Right, it just seems like it's only three months.
It's not really the government.
Four point oh eight, or four point oh seven is what that rate is.
So that.
So it's point two five.
So if you're looking for cost of living, that's what it is, it's four point oh eight.
Not four, I was thinking four point eight zero. I got you, I was like, for one whole point, let's go for three months shorter, but I got you, it's not much, okay.
You could, I mean, you could put, you could do a nine-month, but again, it, you're, it's more hands-on, you're more.
How much do we want to do this, how many times?
Yeah, how many times in the course of a year?
Well, we gotta do it no matter what, it sounds like a year.
Well, we have to do it.
Yeah, but you don't got to do it nine months to a
Yeah.
And this will, this will make it a lot less troublesome or burdensome.
Like I said, we're going to eliminate we're going to eliminate one, two, three, four, five, six line items, correct? Five of the ones that are listed as DLAs right now?
I think it's seven, isn't it?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six, because we got it, we're getting savings.
And then you're going to have two savings, so you're going to eliminate six line items, it'll be all, it'll be no longer separate.
And First Bank will be used for payroll?
Payroll checking.
As of now.
Okay, the next.
For now, it's, you know.
And taxes.
Right, because with going with Nicolay, they're also offering, if we do yeah, direct deposit.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that I think is going to have, I would prefer doing that particular conversation separate from this.
Do we, well, yeah, but that's just a bonus item. I mean, we're just throwing it out there because it's a, it's a cost savings.
For sure.
Do we not get, do, do you not get requests from the employees for direct deposit?
We do have direct deposit.
Oh, we do? Through First Bank, but they
We pay for it from Skyler Larch Hot Law.
Right.
Okay. That's why we don't sign payroll checks anymore.
That's it.
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense, alright.
Yeah, so eventually, if we are, it sounds like we're sticking with two bank accounts for now, but if we do go to one bank account and that ends up being Nicolay, then we would have that free service.
As, for checking, yes.
For the payroll.
Or payroll, I'm sorry.
So are, are, is it, is the Finance Committee in agreement on this, or do you have a different opinion than, at this point, Adrian?
I, I'm confused by what the bottom part of this, that's where my confusion hit.
Oh, yeah.
Because if we're taking, so up here, you said to leave one fifty-eight in the First Bank checking.
Wrong line, right?
But then split out fifty, so then you would put fifty into a Nicolay savings. That would drop down the First Bank savings, or the First Bank savings down to one oh eight, zero, two, four.
Will we have a savings in First Bank, or just a checking?
I'm proposing a, well, we have one now, I'm proposing that we retain the, the savings over there.
At First Bank?
At First Bank.
So you would have a checking and a savings?
Yeah.
Why isn't that?
Which is we have now, that, we do have them.
Right, you do have.
I believe we're I don't want to.
So just based on this one, is that we would then have
We have to get the numbers correct.
Which is kind of what I did on this spreadsheet when I was following it.
Right.
So we would have, we currently have sixty-one, four seventy-two in Nicolay, but then if you then you're proposing to take out fifty from the First Bank checking and put that into a Nicolay. And put that into a Nicolay savings. Which would then drop our First Bank savings down to one oh eight, oh two four. But the difference because of that error, I think, was about thirty-nine thousand two twenty-three.
Okay.
So if you put that in, you can put that into the checking or savings is what you're saying.
Correct. If I'm correct, our, our savings. Maintain a higher interest rate than our checking. And rather than having a big checking account that we don't use from top to bottom. Then, then we should be considering peeling some of that. Money out of the checking account, putting it into the savings, which is what I'm suggesting. Because then it's available when we have a need.
At First Bank.
At, at both banks.
Both banks. So we'd have a checking and savings at both banks.
I knew you were gonna have a savings at Nicolay, I figured, but it's, I like, I thought we were trying to steer towards one bank, so I'm just trying to understand it. Like what we're actually doing. It sounds like we're just taking a little bit more money from, I don't know, put it very simply. From my brain, we're just taking a little bit more money from First Bank and putting in, um, Nicolay and a one, two, three thing for an interest rate. But everything else is pretty much the same. Like payroll is still gonna go out of First Bank.
There's no change on that.
Okay, so.
Does payroll come out of savings or checking?
Checking.
Checking.
So if we leave.
Payroll and taxes.
Yeah.
Come out of.
First Bank. First Bank checking.
But we make more of an interest rate on the savings. Cuz I get what you're saying. We still have the two, we would still have a checking and a savings there, we'd have a checking and a savings. What is the difference between the savings and checking fee at First Bank?
That I don't know.
Cuz I, cuz if I'm, I'm gonna, are you wanting just one account over there? Just have a checking to cover our stuff?
Eventually, it just makes sense. I thought we all just wanted to have one bank account. I know there's reasons why we can't, or, you know, they're trying to be strategic with their money here and, and whatever, but.
Yeah, we're trying to, we're trying to.
But we're, we're moving the, I see your point, cuz we're moving the bulk of our investments, long-term investments, out of First Bank into Nicolay. So I don't understand, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with you. I don't understand why we're gonna keep a, a, a savings account at First Bank. Because if we need to transfer, we can transfer money between banks.
Can do that too.
We can, it, we can just.
I, I'm just trying to understand that.
And then we only have one account at First Bank, which would be a checking. And then we would have a checking and saving at Nicolay, and if we need to add to the First Bank account. We can take it from the savings at Nicolay Bank and transfer it to the First Banks.
I mean, does that work, or is it?
Yeah.
Or do you have the savings at First Bank because it's easier to transfer money?
I wouldn't, theoretically, it would be.
I'm just trying to understand it. Yeah, I don't wanna come across like I'm saying no. I, or, you know, I'm against it. I'm just trying to get a grapple on it, cuz it's.
Cuz basically, you would just do it. If you were going to, you would say you needed to deposit fifty thousand dollars in the First Bank checking account. You can transfer it interbank from the savings to Ni, from Nicolay savings to Nicolay checking, and then send a check. To First Bank.
Yep, you can.
I mean, so, I, I, I guess I, I'm, I'm a hundred percent in agreement that I don't think we need, um. Four items. I think we can, I think we can suffice with a, a First Bank, um.
Down to three items.
Right, a First Bank checking, a Nicolay checking, a Nicolay savings.
And then our investment.
And then our investment portfolio.
And I'm totally good with that. Um, as I, I think I even said down here, I guess I didn't, um.
You need a secretary, Mike.
I, I, I just, secretary's not here.
I, I, no matter how much I.
Okay, well, I was, I was, I was trying to confuse everyone.
I, it wasn't clear.
I was trying to confuse you.
No, it's a tough.
This is kind of, this is kind of in the, you know.
So I guess the question is, the, the question that I have is I'm going back to the First Bank checking.
Okay.
And right now, we have in there three oh five, four twenty, and some change. What are we going to leave in there? What is your overall goal of leaving?
All right, with payroll.
I'd have to look at the numbers. That goes through the accounting for some of that. I'm not positive right at this second.
Yeah, payroll and taxes, just to get a.
Could you take a guess?
I don't know, mm-mm, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out what, um.
Automatically, we're a hundred and.
Yeah.
Or, we're fifty-five thousand over our FDIC.
Six grand, you mean like every month, what payroll would be?
No, just a ro, rolling balance. A rolling, every month, there's a certain amount that goes in, comes out.
I don't know how much goes in.
Okay.
Well, how much comes out is what we're interested in.
Yeah, that's what I was asking, if that's what you're looking for, like what the payroll is by month. Like what is coming out every month?
I don't think it's two hundred and fifty thousand.
Eight thousand dollars.
Because you, 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 you're probably looking at the, 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 I looked at the grants when I signed the grants.
Yeah, so the grant money's coming in, but it's retroactive, so.
Right.
Um, about eight thousand dollars.
So if we had, what do we look at?
If you left a hundred and eight, oh two four.
Uh, I'm doing a per pay period, so probably eight thousand and then sixteen thousand dollars a month.
So if you lit, if you left a, how much, we're proposing a hundred and eight thousand or a hundred and eight?
One oh eight.
One oh eight.
One oh eight thousand in First Bank checking. And that should cover payroll taxes. If anything comes up, we can transfer into that. And then we, you're, obviously, you're gonna have to. What do you, what are we gonna do in Nicolay checking then?
Well, Nicolay checking has sixty-one thousand in it right now.
And looking at their, their, their history, I don't think I included it. The, um, the one month, or, I'm sorry, the history that we had since we started it. Um, I had them print that out and I looked, and we, we were between fifty-five and seventy-five pretty much all the time.
So what do we propose that we leave in that one, Nicolay checking, the sixty-one, four seventy-two?
I would say keep it at what, whatever the balance is right now. Don't touch that.
Don't touch that. Okay, then obviously, you're gonna have to, do we have a Nicolay savings at this time, time, or are we gonna have to open it?
We have to open it.
So we're gonna have to open a, we're, you're gonna have to add to this a Nicolay savings.
Correct.
And what are we proposing? Into that?
I'm getting there.
We're just basically looking at taking what we're taking out.
The biggest draw on that, of course, is tree sale.
Right, and you can plan for that.
Of course, yeah, we could.
Down the road. I mean, you can, before we do that, we can.
We could dip in somewhere and.
Move money and put that in, in there, so.
And trying to make it as simple as possible on your end also.
We're looking at in that savings, if we open a Nicolay savings, we're looking at right around eighty-nine thousand two nineteen and some change that would be in there. And then you would have your. Investments with Nicolay would be the rest of the eight fifty. If we did that and you pretty much follow that format, add all those up, it's gonna put us at the one, one oh eight, seven eighteen number. That's on that balance sheet.
One, one, oh eight, seven nineteen, sixty-four, which is where we wanna be.
Which is where we wanna be based on that balance sheet.
It is. So I think.
We have a way to simplify that. But we don't have, we, there was no decision made over here on what you wanna do yet.
What would be the simplified?
We took away the account over at First Bank. That's how we just simplified that. But the question, the reason we're technically meeting today is.
Right.
What do you want to do with the investment side of it?
Right. Investments.
Well, the two hundred, the, 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 the LGIP, um, the two hundred and fifty thousand gives you. Access to, if we needed to liquidate something quickly.
It could, yes.
And then we're looking at the, the three-year. And those are three seventy-five? I thought they were. I thought they, oh, yeah, three seventy-five, yeah, okay. So that's correct. Um. So we would, we would spread them out, three increments. That's the only.
You don't like that part?
Well, I, I don't like the third year out. I mean, the, the third year is stretching.
And make it, um. Three, we're, three and three, for two years, or one year, two years.
That or two and four.
Or.
I mean, two and four, I mean, that would. I mean, there's no significance that we have to be under two hundred and fifty thousand, right? It doesn't matter.
No, these ones are insured for fif, up to fifty million.
I, I guess I'm just looking at the logic of what, 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 obviously, you came up with the, 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 the three figures for some logical reason, I'm just.
I think Jeremy had suggested it as a, as a, as a triple-tier option. But we, it's not something that we have to do, though. We could, we could do a. You can have two one-year Cedars. And then do a one, two-year. So you could. And you could do two separate two hundred thousand, one-year Cedars.
So four hundred for the first year.
But if some, if something happened and we needed to tap in, we're not breaking a four hundred thousand open. We'd only be breaking open. A two hundred, and that would be a, that's why I suggested that. As an option, if we're worried what happens.
Two hundred for two.
A two hundred for two, to guarantee that interest rate doesn't fall a little bit more security.
I have no problem with that.
I'm good with that.
Wow.
So then we would do, uh.
Two?
Two hundred, one year.
A two hundred, one year.
Two hundred, one year, and then a two hundred, two-year. These are all at three point seven five percent.
And then we're gonna keep the LGIP.
Yes, which is a monthly.
And then that's gonna take care of this First Bank savings totally here. Am I correct? Cuz that's, the, that's, when we, when we say, when we do the savings on that, you're looking at the, the, the. Because I think there was one CD for five hundred seventy-three, twenty-two, sixteen, and there's, there was a separate one for seventy-five, six ninety-one, eighty-five. And then thirteen, eight ninety-eight, forty, and then the sixteen, ten, that was the, those are all the four, um.
The four with money in them, yes.
Right, the, um, you know what I'm looking for, I'm saying.
The DLAs.
DLAs. Cuz we're looking at, that's Rory's, Holly's, and.
Well, they have the names on them, yeah.
Right. But isn't there, what, what did we do with what was left over from Lindsay's and Michaela's?
Michaela, she had taken vacation.
Okay, Michaela had all hers used up, or one of them had some leftover.
Michaela had all hers used up, so we just couldn't get into it to reimburse the district, but, so the district, you know, puts the money off. And then it'll get reimbursed once that, so it'll just get absorbed into the general funds.
That'll be a no item.
Yeah, and, um, Lindsay's too, that was worked out, where she got paid, um, out of her DLA for. According to the grant year of what the, her vacation payout was. Those have been settled, they just couldn't be.
So those will be no longer in existence. Those will be, that money will be, the, the, it'll be out there, but the money will be all. Incorporated in these.
The one that has Rhonda's name on it is the same. Hers is, um, she's already used on her vacation. That was put in there to cover.
Right, but these will all be, these ones here will be now. Not a separate deposit. They'll be all included in the eight hundred and fifty thousand.
Correct.
So, yeah, I'm fine with that.
So when we look at that balance sheet, when we look at this balance sheet, the way that I interpret this is that the First Bank checking, we're gonna reduce. We're taking out a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, three ninety-three from the First Bank checking. That's gonna give us the one oh eight. Number that we're, we're going for on that. And then everything else in there is liquidated except for that Nicolay checking. Everything else is liquidated out of this.
And then we're going to, we have an existing Nicolay checking account, which we're gonna leave the balance as it is. I'm going to open up a Nicolay savings.
Yep, and that.
And that's gonna change to eighty-nine thousand, two nineteen.
Yep.
Okay, and then the First Bank savings, there will be none.
No, this'll be the checking, actually.
This will be the checking. And that's not, oh, that'll be the, still be the one, a hundred and eight thousand twenty-four.
Yep.
Okay. And then this and these all add up. Okay, then there was a question here. The thirty-nine thousand.
But it's not anymore because, no.
Cuz, so this will, this here will all add up to the eleven oh eight, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, there's some change on here that I didn't include. You know, I didn't do the pennies and whatnot if you need to, I can.
There's gonna be minor discrepancies.
Did you want me to get down to the pennies on this for you?
It'll change by tomorrow.
Yeah, it'll.
Yeah, it will.
I mean.
Or tonight.
Yeah.
Soon as somebody writes a check.
I mean, we have the basic outline of what we're gonna do, so.
Yeah, and that was, we're, we're just really looking for the, the structure.
Of what we're doing here.
Yeah, the dollar amounts are, you know, the best we can.
So we're not doing a three-year?
No, just two, two years.
We're doing.
I'm sorry.
Two, one years.
Two, one years and, and one, two years.
Okay, yeah, perfect. And then you're gonna still have the two hundred and fifty thousand that's gonna.
It's a monthly renewal.
So when they do that monthly renewal, do we have to, who do they?
We could charge for that too, by the way. There is a service fee on that.
See, and that's why you're getting five.
Correct. You could drop a percent.
Yeah.
There's a service fee on that one?
Yeah, that's the one that. I didn't bring my, my folder from Nicolay, but there was a.
So if they, if they're, they're renewing a monthly, um, they'll have to correspond with. So are you the contact that they'll correspond with?
Don't know that yet. Don't know that yet.
Well, you know what I'm talking about. You, that somebody will, they'll have to correspond with somebody at, at the district here on the level, which. I'm assuming probably with you.
Right.
And they're.
Or you.
Yeah, or they'd come up and tell you that, okay, we're not, we're, we're down to four percent now.
Well, I'll have to follow myself, I'm sure.
Yeah, cuz.
Or Heather can.
They'll, they'll have to ask you, because you'll, you'll have to approve renew.
I don't have the authorization on the banks to do any of that.
Well, basically, it's, it's automatic. It's in there for a, a length of time. The LGIP.
Okay, that's a question I have then. So like, is it a year and they'll automatically renew it, wha, whatever rate it is at the end of the month? Okay.
Yeah, it floats by the month.
Right, so every month, they will do it. So how long is that tied up for?
One year.
That's for one year also. That's for one year also, okay, that makes sense now.
But do we have to pay something every month for it?
Well, yeah, there's a service fee. There's a service fee.
Because they're
They administrate it.
Yeah, they're, they're investing it in.
Right, they have somebody that's managing, otherwise, it would fall on
One of us.
One of us.
Yeah.
And that, it's not something that I don't think any one of us wants, the responsibility and the, the, the time-consuming, cause it I mean, that's why they pay them.
Time-consuming, yeah.
That's why they pay them, that's why you're getting a higher interest rate on it.
Fiduciaries that are supposed to be working in our best interests.
How much is the, how much is the monthly fee?
It all depends on.
I don't have that information, I have that, there was gonna be, if we went with the four point seven five rate at the fifty million dollars of coverage, there was a hundred and twenty-five dollar monthly fee on that. I don't have any information on
I'm gonna ask.
The CDR fee. Because you know, the LGIP, I don't have information on an LGIP fee. I don't know if that was ever disclosed, honestly.
Yeah, I, I heard, it was kind of like a, yeah.
Well, it's good to know those fees, trust me, cause I've seen it.
Oh, it's pretty big, believe me.
Another, another place we deal with, that's a lot of hidden fees, so it's good to know.
Was it in an email, that he sent that in an email or no?
No, it was just a conversation.
Are you contacting our contact?
Kinda.
Okay. Cause it's like, it's after banking hours, we probably won't get that answer today, but.
Hmm, it's going to him, direct.
Oh, look at you.
That was it.
Okay.
What's that?
You're big time.
Yeah.
Direct line.
Throws his phone in the corner, I don't wanna talk to those.
So what was a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five dollars a month charged for?
That would have been on, not the CDARS program, but the fifty million dollar insurable. There was another, uh, one that we discussed, another option that we discussed, and it was insured up to fifty million. But it was a hundred and some dollar fee per month is what it was.
So basically, you're, it's, it's an insurance policy, you're paying, you're paying insurance. But the, uh
And that might be what I was.
The LGIP, we're just, well, all we're, the only holdup we have right there is, we're just looking at what the administrative cost will be
Yeah.
For that monthly charge.
And I don't have, I don't recall any of that being discussed, and I don't.
Yeah, we'll see if he answers, otherwise, you know, we can move along with our fundamentals here.
So do you, do you foresee us being with, um, two banks for like the, another year?
No, um, I, I, I don't foresee anything like that. Just trying to maintain a small footprint with First Bank until, you know, all of that legal stuff settles out, when the dust is gone, and, and we can figure out what we're doing.
Okay, that's fair.
You're right, he's after five. He went home, left his, left his phone in his trunk.
Did you call us, did you text his cell phone?
Yeah. You wanna try?
How dare he do that?
Uh, tell him that too.
Well, then he's gonna have my phone number and people don't get that.
Yeah.
That's right, I don't even.
Oh, you borrow Kathy's phone while I wanna reply something, I don't wanna have my.
Yeah, right.
Can you borrow your, can you borrow your number on?
My son does, uh, I think he's got three phones.
So this is, I mean, this is the only holdup we have on this, so I mean, otherwise, I think we're in agreement on this? This proposal right here?
Yes.
I think it's a good idea.
I, I agree a hundred percent.
I'm with it.
You guys did a lot of hard work on them.
Yeah, thank you, and thanks for
Um, so what do we need to now, do we need to put this in the form of a motion?
Yeah, we'd have to, we'd have to solidify it that way, I'm sure. Now, they're granted, we're, we're also agreeing that there are some minor dollar cent numbers that we're gonna be approving, that we don't know the actual exact number.
And those that fall in, you mean, totals?
Totals, yeah.
But this is the basic footprint we're gonna, we're gonna go ahead.
We're gonna send so many dollars to Nicolay, we're gonna keep so many dollars in First Bank, we're gonna change the balances at Nicolay's checking and put in a savings.
And basically, what we're gonna do is, we're going to
Four investments.
Right, we're, we're going to not have any savings at First Bank, just at checking, and then the rest of it will be
In Nicolay.
In Nicolay.
Correct. And in some accounts.
Okay, cause we're covered. Now, the two hundred and fifty in the LGIP, if we needed to that's just tied up monthly, we could, we could change that figure, say if we needed to take out seventy-five thousand out of that, we can just take seventy-five thousand out of that.
As far as I know.
The next month, it would be a hundred
It would be a smaller amount, yeah.
Hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, so if we're looking at it, it's telling us by, uh, uh, this is by the month here. So for twelve months, it's just interest rates and what you can expect out of it.
Oh, this is a suspected interest, accumulated interest.
On this, yeah, on that particular chart.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Nothing from your buddy.
Yeah, I think we lost Buddy Miss.
So the, uh when they do the cured interest rate on these, they're doing on the two-year and the in the three-year, they're just doing yearly interest. Am I correct?
Yes.
Wow, that's a far cry from thirty thousand. When you add them all together? And then they're doing on the, on the twelve-month, they do a monthly?
The CDR, uh, the LGIP?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
When they do the, uh, the one year.
CDAR is one year.
CDR, they do it, they, they show the interest as monthly, so you'd have to add those all together to get the yearly balance. I'm just looking at it, I'm just doing, doing the math in my head and it's cause we made thirty thousand dollars last year on our CDs. That's a lot, but, so, all right, so do we need to?
That would be twenty-one thousand on this and about two thousand on that.
What are we looking at?
Twenty-three thousand roughly.
No fee for LGIP account.
Okay.
But what they do is the interest, they sweep it into a different that's the sweep where they, because you want two hundred, that account assured, insured at your EIN for that two fifty.
Correct.
And so the interest does not stay, they sweep it out into a different because you're insured on that EIN.
So where do they move it to?
I think it goes into a sub-account is what, is how he explained it.
That is right.
Okay.
So there is no fee, that, the fee was on the fifty mil insurable.
That makes sense, yeah.
Okay. So we're definitely good to go on this, then?
I'm still doing simple math here.
You're doing a lot more involved than I am, I'm simple. Geez, yeah.
So your one year, you're at about seven thousand.
Right, so then, so then add
Seven thousand six thirty point twenty-six.
First year.
Seven six thirty zero, and then you're gonna add another seven six three zero, you're at like twenty-two three three.
Which is, which is
You guys are hilarious.
Which is your, I mean, obviously, when you're, when you drop two percentage points, that's where the difference comes in.
There, yeah, that's a good point, Nate, that, uh, the interest rates are
Then you're gonna throw in the interest rate.
And on this one, yeah.
So you're gonna be pretty close.
Not bad.
You're never gonna be bad.
He said a sweep account works by setting a target balance, and the primary and all the funds over go into the FDIC account.
Okay.
So we're protected, which is a huge which is huge.
Which is
Okay.
The reason we're here.
So we're good to go, so?
So you want me to make a motion on this, cause I think I have it in my brain, I wanna get it out.
Please.
Yep.
I'm gonna make a motion to liquidate all of the First Bank accounts except for the checking and leave in that checking hundred and eight thousand and twenty-four dollars. The Nicolay account, as far as the checking, will maintain its sixty-one thousand four seventy-two. We're not adding any additional money into the Nicolay checking. We are going to open a savings account with Nicolay. And we will also open a complete investment account of about eight hundred and fifty thousand. The remaining funds that are being transferred over from First Bank will be put into the Nicolay savings, which should be right around eighty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty dollars.
Correct, and I support that.
Well, and then, you need, we need to do the breakdown that, that you're doing the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar investment, which would be a two hundred and fifty thousand LGIP, and then two one-year CDARS at two hundred thousand and one two-year at
Two one.
Two hundred thousand. Good? So that's the motion, do I have a second?
And I support that for sure.
Motion made by Saint Vincent, supported by Sigorsky, take a roll call.
Sigorsky.
Yes.
Saint Vincent.
Yes.
Brockman.
Yes. Motion passed.
Thank you.
Oh, good, okay. That's it, right?
Yep.
Here we go. So we're, that concludes our new business, uh, there's no general public comment. Board comment, any board members have a comment?
Thank you.
Well, thank you.
For, for getting, uh, for, we got over the hump, and that's what we needed.
I agree, I have nothing else.
I have nothing, I just want to thank you two for, um thinking of this and getting things sorted out, and we're, I think we're on the road of doing some simplification.
Thank you. Move, we adjourn.
Uh, all right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
At five thirty-six.
All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Meaning adjourn.
At five thirty-six.
At five thirty-six.